How are you doing?
Good.
It's good. Especially at the classroom. Yeah. I was in South, yeah. Definitely go to the high school. But you guys. Yeah, you first come. Good though. I didn't feel that's great. Uh-huh. Yeah. So. Yeah. Yeah. So definitely go to the high school. But you guys. Yeah. Yeah, you first come. Good though. I'm worse about it. It's cute. I don't know. Yeah. 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 So it's all part of the day that they're all here. It's like, man. Where is this type of thing today? Walk down there. They're like, yeah. Like, they're talking to people. But like, it's not. They're also fair. But, yeah. So it's a big deal, but like, that's not a situation. And because they're not. They're like, oh. Yeah. Like, he'll run there. Right. So Dave, Dave was just running against my Caesar. And I. Yeah. 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 Especially when it's about this relationship related, like, what's the reason? There's no. There's no, right? Yeah. 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 So there's two, I'm sorry, citywide. And there's. Yeah. 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 So you are like. Yeah. 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 Ready to go.
Okay. Good evening. We would like to welcome you to this meeting of the Provo Municipal Council. It's 5:35 PM Tuesday, November 14th, and we're convened here in the Municipal Council chambers. We would like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, Provo Channel 17, where it will also be available for on-demand viewing. The council requests that citizens help maintain the decorum of the meeting by turning off or silencing electronic devices, being respectful to the council and others, and refraining from applauding during the proceedings of the meeting. We'll now begin with a roll call.
Cliff Strachan.
David Harding.
Gary Winington.
Kim Santiago.
Dave Connect.
George Stewart.
Hey, I'm Bjorn.
Dave Sewell.
Wayne Parker.
And Mr. Strachan, did we ask someone to give the opening prayer?
Yes.
The opening prayer will be given by Sean Pace. Pardon? Yes, that microphone should be on.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the blessing we have of living in this wonderful city and having the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for the health and strength which allows us to be together. We ask for thy Spirit to be in these proceedings that we can be able to remember our primary focus of following thee and doing thy will. We ask for thy blessing of thy Spirit to attend with those making decisions and those making comments tonight, that they will be able to speak clearly and be able to be satisfied with the things that they are able to transmit verbally to others. We are grateful for all that we have from thee and ask for thy blessing in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. The pledge of allegiance will be provided by Nathan Pace of Troop 758.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to note that Mayor Curtis has, as you probably all know, has won the congressional election and has therefore been required to resign as mayor so he could begin his congressional duties. We very much appreciate his service to our city and wish him the very best in representing us there in Congress. And so by statute, as the council chair, I'm temporarily acting mayor for a few weeks until we get our mayor-elect appointed as the interim mayor. And because of that, I'm wearing two different hats, and I've asked my vice chair if he would conduct the meeting tonight, give me one less thing to worry about. So I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Connect.
Thank you, Dave. Next thing on the agenda is a neighborhood spotlight for Mazur Neighborhood, and we have Cara McClellan here to do a presentation.
Okay, thank you, council. We're really excited to let you know a little bit about our, what we're doing in our neighborhood. I was elected about a year ago, and one of the first things that people in our neighborhood wanted to do was repaint the Mazur Park mural. It was a beautiful mural at one time, but it was really falling into bad disrepair. And so we decided, let's do it. Let's make this park beautiful. And so we connected with a local artist who lives in the neighborhood as well, in Mazur Neighborhood, and she kind of took on that project of designing and getting that situated. And we were really excited to be able to use the Provo City Matching Grant, the Neighborhood Matching Grant, and that's what we used to be able to make this happen. And so I'm going to actually let Alex Vaughn tell a little bit about it, since she was the artist.
Yeah. Yeah, so I live in Mazur Neighborhood. I moved in just about a year ago, and I wanted to make the park a little more friendly. There was perception that maybe the park was a little more rundown, neglected, and I wanted to take basically that blank canvas and turn it into something more inviting and make the neighborhood appreciate this park more, I think. So I chose colors, you can flip through it as I go, but I chose primary colors and state-related elements so that it would feel timeless and relevant to our city. I thought it was going to take me two weekends. It took me two months because it was, it's about a 300-foot wall and it's 12 feet tall, and it's really hard to understand the scale of it without seeing it in person. So I definitely think you should go see it if you haven't seen it yet. And yeah, so we basically just transformed it into like a super colorful wall so you can see it from the street and it feels a lot more inviting. I've had a lot of people tell me that they were kind of not into this park, but now they think it's great, and it just needed a new fresh coat of paint. So I was really happy to have the opportunity to get help from my team here and the city, and we had some wards come and help and a lot of my friends. It probably took, man, maybe 300 man-hours. It was insane. These are some photos of it being finished. And there's a giant Mazur. You can see the train. It's right next to the train station. That was something I wanted to feature because some people see that as maybe like a negative that it's a block away from the train, but I thought it was really great, and I love hearing it at four in the morning, honk its horn. And so a lot of kids have told me they liked the train. If we have time, I do have some videos of it to show the scale, but if we don't, that's There's one where it pans over like the entire distance of it, maybe that one? If you can tell which one it is? Oh, yeah. Let's see if there's. Something that's fun about it is because it's so big, depending on how close you are to it, like, there's a lot of different types of photos you can take. I was kind of hoping people would be motivated to come hang out there and take pictures, but yeah, it's pretty difficult to capture just how large it is. It spans the entire park, so it's really fun in that sense, but that's fine, though. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the spotlights. When I first got married, we spent 12 years in Mazur, so it's a great place. And back in the day, this was just kind of a swamp. So that was another story of how you got the park. Next, we have a presentation of the Employee of the Month for November, and that'll be presented by Drew Hubbard. And accepted by.
Yader.
Yader Zalaya.
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 Okay, we have a PowerPoint. We have a nice, awesome picture here. Yader is from California. He's been in the military. He served 27 years in the military. I won't even pretend to pronounce that cryptologic linguist. It's a hard word, but he's done a lot in the military, but he realized that wasn't enough, so he wanted to come work for Provo City and as a parking enforcement. Yader quickly, he's been here for two years, and in those two years, he's been advanced to supervisor of parking enforcement. And we able to switch her? Do I need to do that? See if I can do it. Oh, yeah. Okay, there's Yader up there on the left. There's Yader with his wife, Mekki, who I believe is here, with two of their children or three?
Two.
Two of them, okay. And he does have four kids total?
Four kids.
Awesome. In the two years that he has been here, he has recovered nine stolen vehicles in the city of Provo. And so he is awesome. He's the employee of the month for November, and that's all I have. I really appreciate him. He's the best person to work with. This is right, right there.
Next on the agenda is our public comment portion. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, there will be time to comment if you wish to speak. For items which do not appear, or I'm sorry, require a public hearing, public comment will be taken following the presentation of the item, but will be limited to 10 minutes. At this time, 15 minutes has been set aside for an open public comment period, which is intended to allow comments on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Persons who speak during this time to an item that is on the agenda will not normally be afforded a second opportunity to speak during the comment period specific to that item. During any public comment period, each speaker will generally be limited to two minutes. Additional time may be given to individuals specifically invited to speak, such as applicants, neighborhood chairs, and others that may be representing additional persons. Please begin your comments by stating your name and city of residence. Due to noticing requirements, no formal actions will be taken in this meeting on any matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those with any comments are free to approach the podium.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It does show this on the screen, but this might be an appropriate time to just mention that if there's anyone here that was intending to make public comment on items seven or eight, those items have been continued and will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. Seeing no one with a comment, we will close this portion of the meeting.
Mr. Chair, with that being said, with what Brian just said, anybody that still wanted to comment on those things, this would be the appropriate time to talk about those things now for two minutes. Is that correct?
For those two items that we continued?
For those two items that we just continued, that we said would be continued. I just want somebody to be here and think that they've come for nothing. If they want to speak.
Right.
They're entitled to speak now.
That's a great point of order. Is there anyone that would like to speak to those two items? Seven and eight. Seeing none, we'll move forward. Our first item on the action agenda is an implied motion on a resolution requesting approval from the Utah Division of Water Quality for a variance from technology-based phosphorus effluent limits, and that will be presented by Dave Decker.
Thank you, Mr. Connect, and thank you to the council for the opportunity to discuss this item. We have gone over this item for a number of times in work session for the council, but for the benefit of the public who may be either attending or watching, I'll give a very, very abbreviated history about the variance letter and the resolution that's associated with it. Several years ago, the State Department of Environmental Quality and Division of Water Quality issued some new regulations limiting phosphorus that would be discharged from treatment plants from municipalities and special service districts throughout the state. Those regulations go into effect in 2020, and they've also indicated that there would be a second step of regulations come into effect around the year 2030. The first step of regulations limits our phosphorus discharge to one milligram per liter. The second step, about 10 years later, would be in the range of .1 milligrams per liter, a significant reduction in the phosphorus. Because of the second step of regulations that they've strongly hinted would be taking place, municipalities and special service districts that run a treatment plant have looked at fairly aggressive means and probably looking more at the second step of regulations to limit phosphorus in the effluent, understanding that the regulations may pose some financial hardships. They have allowed municipalities and special service districts to submit a variance letter by the end of the calendar year, this coming calendar year, the end of December 2017. And that variance letter would allow those regulations to be delayed until 2025 instead of 2020. And it would also allow municipalities and special service districts to put a plan together anticipating the second step of regulations. So we are recommending that Provo City submit the variance letter, and associated with that variance letter, the state requires us to have a formal resolution passed by the city council acknowledging that variance letter and a plan moving forward, and that is the resolution that's before you tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one, Mr. Decker.
Okay.
From your previous presentation, you mentioned the state is still trying to decide on the phosphorus limit that we'll have in, I think it was 2030, was it?
That's correct.
And you mentioned a range of like .05 to .5.
That's correct.
How much difference in cost is there to us in either building a new treatment plant or upgrading a plant, depending on which end of the spectrum we were targeting? Is there much difference?
The .5, the higher part of the range in the second step of the regulations, there's probably several options for the city to look at as far as meeting the higher range. There's a lot fewer options in the lower part of the range. It probably forces us to go to a very top-of-the-line type of treatment in order to get into that lower part of the range. And so there is, I can't tell you exactly in dollars the difference, but there definitely is a difference, and it probably would be fairly significant.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think the public would like to know approximate dollars, David.
Well, the first step, I can give you some ranges. In the first set of regulations, we have, we've heard a couple of different estimates provided to us. One came from our consultant, and he estimated somewhere in the range of $60 to $100 million for Provo City to meet the first set of regulations. We've also heard from John Adams, who is the general manager at Tempanoga Special Service District, the services that runs a treatment plant for the north end of Utah County. And in order to meet the first set of regulations, they spent about $80 million at their treatment plant, and estimated the second set of regulations would cost another $100 million. And we have estimated, if we have to go to the lower part of the range, a new treatment plant would likely be needed, and that is estimated about $220 million for Provo City.
And what would that do to rates?
It would make a significant difference in the rates. Depending on the options, we've laid out several options to the council and have not made a conclusion yet, have not made a recommendation on which method of getting a new treatment plant, but it would significantly change rates.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now I'd like to open this up for a public comment, if anyone would like to approach. Seeing no one, we would bring this back to the council and look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, there is an implied motion.
That's correct.
Under our council rules. So no motion needs to be made unless there's a substitute motion.
Just going by the script. So, yes, Dave?
I just have a comment. I think one of the reasons why it's important for us to request this letter is because of not knowing what our target is and a potential variance in cost of, it sounds like, well over $100 million. I think it's good to take more time and hopefully get a better idea of what we're shooting
So, since it's an implied motion, yes?
I just wanted to make the comment that if we were, we're requesting a variance from environmental regulation, and so the public could get the impression that we're trying to shirk our responsibility or avoid coming into compliance. I would say that if we were looking to do the bare minimum, the bare minimum would be to make some duct tape upgrades to our current plant and just call it good and just cross our fingers for the future, you know, future regulations. I think that this actually is an example of us taking quite seriously our responsibility to, towards our environmental quality, but in order to make the types of investments and capital improvements in order to address our responsibilities in the long term, we need this variance to give us more time to bring that about.
I agree. So all in favor of the resolution? And with the unanimous vote, do you still want me to give the names of those four?
No, if you just announce that it's unanimous, that's satisfactory.
It's unanimous vote, yes. Item three, an ordinance amending Provo City code to allow commercial and industrial energy customers to obtain a license to generate electric energy in excess of 25 kilowatts. And that would be presented by Travis Ball, our energy director.
Thank you, council chair, and thank you, council, for this opportunity. This is exciting for the city of Provo. The Energy Department is recommending that we change the ordinance to allow commercial and industrial customers to generate over 25 KW. Right now, there's a limit at 25 KW. This will allow them to generate and also be paid for that generation by UNPA. Now, the payment would be at an avoided cost for the city, which would make it so that the city is not harmed by the cost of the power, but also incentivizes the adoption of, whether it's renewables or any other type of generation that can be in the mixture for the city. And the power that is generated will be paid for, but the customer will pay the rates that is set by the council when they consume energy. So the Energy Department rec- So the Energy Department recommends this. I can go through more, but is there any questions on this, on this ordinance change?
Dave?
You had a nice little graphic in the, in the work session. I think for the benefit of the public, yeah, that one right there, can you just, you know, a 45-second nutshell what the sell-all-buy-all means and what the proposal is?
Absolutely. It's a little bit different than net metering, which would decrease the amount of energy that the customer would have to purchase. What it really means is that whatever is generated, for this instance, on a solar panel will go through the meter, and it goes out on the grid. All the, all the energy that's generated would be purchased through a power purchase agreement with UMPA. Whatever is used by the customer would then be metered going into the facility. And so it's a, it's a little bit different way of doing a, compensating someone who is generating energy that goes into the grid.
Thank you. Like to open this up for public comment, if there are any comment or questions? Seeing none, we'll bring this back. And Brian, this one doesn't say implied motion. Are they all?
Yeah, I noticed that. There is an implied motion for every item. I'm not sure why it's not in the notes.
Got it. Okay. There's no other, yes, Dave?
Quick comment, just, just a note that this does not affect residential customers. This is only available to commercial and industrial. And I overheard someone speaking earlier that was suggesting that the current proposal for what they would be compensated from UMPA is actually greater than what they would get from net metering, yet this doesn't have the same structural liabilities that net metering does. And so I think this is a beautifully elegant proposal. It, to restate it, it provides the incentives for those commercial or industrial customers who want to go on this route. It provides those incentives, but it doesn't, doesn't have the liability to the, to the city. So I think it's a win-win. I think it's a great solution.
Appreciate those comments. All in favor? And the vote is unanimous. Item four, an ordinance requesting a street vacation for 40 East from 3,700 North to 3,800 North, and for 3,800 North from University Avenue to 40 East. This is presented by Brian Maxfield, one of our, our planning supervisor.
Thank you. This vacation is connected with the Old Ivy Development, which is underway on the, basically 3,700 North, University Avenue. 40 East was dedicated in December of 2015. The proposed project, let's see, is that up there, is that available, Bryce? Yes, if you've got that. 40 East enters University Avenue at 3,800 North, and then runs between 3,700 up 100 or so feet into the property. And we've got some illustrations here, just to give you the general location and to show you the result. This does not totally vacate the idea of a street, but it just shifts the street. Two of the prominent features on this would be the cul-de-sac, or the bulb that's at the end on the north of 3,800 North, and then the extension where it comes into 3,700. The new feature would change that so that it goes further east along 3,700 North before connecting to the road. This would provide a lot better traffic situation at the interchange there with University Avenue and 3,700 North. So the vacation's basically changing the bulb on the north end and its direct connection to the south to 3,700 North, and then pulling that along within the property up to a location further east on 3,700 North. Any questions?
Just a comment, Brian. I think one of the things that we had this road here originally is we needed to procure the access onto University Avenue, and UDOT was demanding that we had an access onto 3,700 North, if I remember right. And so we had to just basically put it in there until we could get the development that we thought was going to be the right development for that area, and then we could readjust the road, which is basically what we're doing.
Correct. There was a timing issue in order to get that in and get approved so that we had some connection between those two roads. Correct.
Thank you. Is the neighborhood chair here? David Rosen, River Bottoms Chair?
Dave Rosen, I'm the River Bottoms Neighborhood Chair, and we are aware of this, and Mr. Winington is correct. The neighborhood was very much aware when that was negotiated with the state of Utah that that road would go in there for the purpose of acquiring that access off of University Avenue, and we fully expected it to be vacated when a proper project came in and was approved. And that was approved. It improves the safety by vacating and pushing that intersection further to the east, and neighborhood has no issues with that.
Thank you for coming. We'd like to open this up to the general public, if anyone has a comment or question on this item. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council, and, oop, sorry, come on up.
Good evening. Dan LaFontaine. Just wanted to make a public notification, simply that, I mean, I understand the roads going in, I don't have a problem with that, but we have a contract that stipulates our property, which is north of this. We have access through that property at the time that, when our property, we're right along University Avenue. So in the event that that is, becomes a commercial property, we're supposed to have access all the way through this property, so, which does not allow a lot for that at this point, but should have. So I just wanted to make that known to everybody here, and I'm sure that's probably going to be an issue that'll keep coming up.
Do you have an easement?
We have an access.
Is it in writing?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And you probably all know about that, I'm sure. So just reminding. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
My name is Elliot Smith with Terraform Companies. We're the group that purchased all of the property from the Faulkners and have since sold the residential portion, as you know, to John Dester. So John Dester, Georgetown Development now owns the residential portion. We still own what's shown here is the Jiffy Lube and the future development. I wasn't going to stand up today, but just as a little bit of a clarification to what Mr. LaFontaine just indicated, that easement that he refers to has actually been terminated between him and Mr. Faulkner. I just wanted that to be noted for the record, and he knows that. And I have all of the documentation, and that has all been recorded properly. So just wanted to clarify that for the record, that that easement no longer exists, nor does he have a right to access that road. So I'm the applicant. If you have any other questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to address them. Otherwise, I'll take a seat.
I'd like to know how it was terminated.
It was between him and Nick Faulkner. That was the agreement.
Between Mr. LaFontaine and Nick Faulkner?
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like there's some confusion on that, then. Does he have it? Does he not have it?
He does not.
Does he have it, Dan?
They say I do, they say I don't, so that's my lawyer.
Okay, and I guess that's where you guys will get to work that out.
Uh-huh, yep.
Does the city have it? Do we have documentation?
Of?
Do we have documentation that, that there is no access to this property?
No, they're private easements. They're not city easements, and it doesn't affect the road dedication.
And one other thing that's important to clarify, the easement that used to exist stipulated that if the property were developed, so LaFontaine's property is to the north up against the residential portion, said if it developed, all of it developed commercial, then he would have access. It's not all developed commercial, and the most important salient point is that was terminated. So.
Just to, just to clarify for the purposes of the council, as Mr. Maxfield just indicated, it's a private property dispute that is irrelevant unless there, unless somehow the council is concerned that they should not vacate the roadway because the intended purpose of doing that is not going to be accomplished. But the city doesn't have any involvement in actually determining whether the easement exists or not.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so are there any questions or discussion with the council? Are we ready to vote? All in favor? Vote is unanimous. Item five, an ordinance amending Provo City code to clarify minimum required submittals for project plan reviews. This will be presented by Austin Corey, Planner.
Thank you. Bryce, if you'll pull up those, the draft language, please. This item is, was discussed by the Development Approval Process Review Committee, headed by Councilmember Sewell. The reasoning behind this amendment is to offer some clarity. In our ordinance right now, under project plan submittals and submission, subdivision submittals, there's a list of various different items that are required by an applicant. That's broken into two different paragraphs. Paragraph two of each of those sections in the noticing language references a list of items that are required at the time of application, and an application is not accepted unless all of those items show up on that list. Paragraph three of those sections is highlighted here on this, you can see the, under the first bullet point, currently states that based on size, scope, and complexity, any of the following information may be required. And then there's a pretty exhaustive list that exists in each of those sections detailing a myriad of different possible scenarios of things that could be required by the city. And the last bullet point in each of those is, and any other information that the, that the city deems is necessary in order to make their decisions. In order to simplify the process and make it more clear what is absolutely required to start the process, the three code sections that you see, the reason why the, the only one that's left out is final subdivision, because it already does this. The three sections that you see before you propose eliminating that list of requirements and simply making a statement that if the city identifies something that is necessary in order to make a determination, applicable to those applications, that they can ask for those things. That's really the meat of what's being proposed in the amendment. The only other additions that you see are in 1503-300 under concept plan. We did add the requirement for a conceptual integrated development plan. Those are required in subdivision applications right now. There are instances primarily with commercial development, when we would have concept plans coming in that don't have subdivision plans, and the DAPR committee felt like that was a submittal item that they would like to see vetted and be an important part of that. So that was added in there. In 1503-310, under final project plans, utility plans were moved from the maybe required to the always required section for obvious reasons. In 1504-130, preliminary subdivision, we just did some re-titling. It talked about an infrastructure plan, and we just reemphasized that it was preliminary. During your work session, Public Works highlighted, or provided some additional comments to the comments that they had provided to Planning Commission and some markup language to the ordinance. I was able to get some clarification after that work session, and Brian, I don't know if that's available or not, hopefully.
It is. So Bryce, do you have that open? So we've actually created a version two of the exhibit that you saw over the weekend that shows what the specific changes requested by Public Works are. They're actually quite, quite simple. So when Bryce gets this up here, Bryce, if you'll scroll down, the only two differences actually are sections added at line 86 and 149. And those two sections say the same thing. And so all it is, it just incorporates by reference a, the Public Works Department Development Guidelines, which are already adopted by City Code. And so that's the only, that's the only change that Public Works has actually requested from the document that you saw over the weekend that was posted to Desire, so.
So I ran that language back through Public Works again and have received confirmation that they're comfortable with that language as well. So we wanted to go ahead and present that to you and let you know that it seems like it was much less confusing than it first appeared, being presented in work session. But that's all that I have, and happy to answer any questions.
So since those are minor changes, you're hoping that we would consider this and vote on it tonight, right?
I would hope so. It's, it's pretty straight, it's much more straightforward than it seemed like when we were trying to digest those markups all during work session, but we're comfortable with that, and we don't feel like there's actually the necessity to run it back through CRC or Planning Commission at this point.
Do we have any questions for clarification? If we're going to vote tonight, we want to make sure any questions are answered. Okay, thank you very much. Like to open this up for public comment or question? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. And all in favor? Ready?
If I can make a comment first.
Sure.
I just wanted to commend both Public Works and Community Development for working together to resolve concerns, listening to each other, and, and doing it in such a timely manner. I think that's, just shows the, the great teamwork that we have here in the administration in Provo City and in our departments. I appreciate the work that you guys do.
Yes.
I do have a question I probably should have asked earlier, Mr. Corey. So with this new proposal, when the, the concept plan comes to the council, the Public Works, sort of the roads, the sewer, all those kinds of things will, will not have been completed at that time, or they, or I guess, could you explain how that, what that looks like when the concept plan comes to the council? Under these new rules?
Yes, so basically, as far as the actual required items, nothing's necessarily being changed, but the issue that we were running into was a significant amount of cost that was being spent upfront, and on, and in a lot of occasions, it was on items that really didn't play into the decision. So, street design, your roads, your lot layouts, things like that, those are all still required, and they fit under that paragraph two. So none of that paragraph two is really being changed, other than in that previous slide that I showed, the addition of a couple of things and some minor clarifications. What is being changed is the list of things that we might require. And again, that's because we were getting developers who were going to that list and looking at it saying, oh, I need to do all of this stuff. And they were presenting heaps of documents that the city wasn't even reviewing as part of the concept plan. Now, sometimes they are necessary items and they're required, but in this instance, it basically just gives the city staff the ability of highlighting the few items that we do need in addition to those required items, rather than a developer misunderstanding and providing more than what's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Chair?
Yes. And I apologize to, to do this to you on your, I guess this isn't your first time, but your first time in a while conducting the meeting, but there's a deficiency in the, in the chair notes on this item as well, because this is actually the first time this item has come from Planning Commission. So under our, under our new rules of procedure for Planning Commission items, it's necessary to first ask if any council member desires for this item to be continued to the next meeting, and if so, it must be continued. If not, then you If not, then you could go ahead and proceed with the vote on the implied motion.
Anyone want to postpone this? That's great. So, yes?
Can I make a comment, though?
Sure.
I just wanted to express appreciation to Mr. Harding and Mr. Connect for their work with me on this committee and to the administration. This is really a good example of a joint effort between the council and the administration. The administration really provided a lot of, a lot of resources, a lot of department heads have, have come to our meetings and worked with us on this, so we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? And the vote is unanimous. Next item is an ordinance enacting a new Provo City Code provision regarding rental contracts, and this will be presented by Brian Jones, our city council attorney.
I hadn't paid attention to that part of the notes. This item has been under discussion for quite some time and has been presented on in this meeting and in several workshop sessions. The current, so I think the only thing new that I would even add is just for the public's understanding and awareness, there was an issue raised in work session today regarding onsite property managers that, under the previous terms of the, under the previously proposed draft of the ordinance, because they were also tenants, would not have been able to be considered property managers or owners for the purpose of the ordinance in order to sign the, the contracts. We've amended the ordinance, the proposed draft in work session today to, to add some language in subparagraph 1A, so that it now does include property managers, onsite property managers of multifamily dwellings. And so we've done that in order to, to address that concern that was raised just in the last couple of days. Otherwise, the currently, the current draft is the same as has been discussed in the last couple of meetings, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Could you read through the draft? Because only part of it is showing on the board. Is there, can we?
Sure.
Maybe go through the draft with the public?
Yeah, that's great. So, so this first section, I guess I'll start with, for those who may be new to the issue, it has been discussed a lot, but that doesn't mean everybody's been watching. So the purpose of this ordinance is to create a tool that helps code enforcement officers in the city with the objective of enforcing the occupancy limits that are already currently in City Code. And in order to do that, what it requires in, in brief, and I'll run through the actual text in a minute, but what it requires in brief is that every adult tenant and the owner of every rental property must have a document executed between the two of them that contains at least an acknowledgement that the person is living there, a copy of the landlord's rental dwelling license approval letter, which happens to state what the occupancy limits and parking limits for the property are, and a document that Provo City has, has created that is entitled Tenants' Rights and Responsibilities, that lays out just a few facts regarding state law, regarding what a tenant's rights and responsibilities are. And so the way that it does this, as far as going through the ordinance, is section one defines some terms. Specifically, it defines a contract as meaning a document that meets those requirements. Many contracts will contain a lot, a great deal more information and/or terms of, of the rental agreement, but that's not necessary for purposes of this ordinance. And then subsections two and three require, first, that the owner have such a document with every adult tenant, and second, that every adult tenant have such a contract, such a document with the owner. And then Bryce, if you can scroll down a little bit further. Subsection four lays out those three requirements that I just mentioned about what the contract must contain. Subsection five requires that owners must make that document available to Provo City officials when there is reason, reasonable cause to believe that there's a violation. And subsection six makes it unlawful. Subsection seven makes it a Class C misdemeanor to violate this section, which is the standard penalty for any zoning violation, which is, is what our over occupancy laws are. And then subsections, subsection A and B clarify the, the standard of intent that, and just clarifies that a person has to be aware, they have to intend a violation or be aware that their conduct is reasonably certain to cause a violation, or consciously disregard a, a risk that they're violating the ordinance. And then subsection C provides that subsequent offenses can be Class B misdemeanors instead of Class C, and subsection D is some technical language for dealing with that enhancement.
I heard you say can be a Class B, but it says shall be a Class B there.
Yes. And the way that that works as far as, that, all, the legislative function is, is performed by the council. The prosecutorial function is an administrative function performed by the prosecutors. It'll be charged as a Class B misdemeanor. That doesn't mean it has to result in a conviction of a Class B. Well, no, we're talking about the enhancement.
Okay.
So a second offense would be charged as a Class B misdemeanor, but notwithstanding that it's saying that in the ordinance, that doesn't mean that the prosecutors couldn't reduce it during, during negotiations.
Thank you. So just for clarification, for those, 7A, where it talks about consciously, can you give that in more lay terms?
Can you scroll back up to 7A, Bryce? So the first, I mean, I, really, A is, and this was added at the urging of the Realtors' Association and the Apartment Association. From a legal perspective, A says the exact same thing that the, that the sentence in seven says, but what it does is it copies the state definition of each of those terms. So seven says, your action has to be intentional, knowing, or reckless. A is a copy from state code of what it means to be intentional, knowing, or reckless. But in other words, it can't be, you cannot be held liable for violating this provision if you were unaware of its existence and had, and, and didn't, and were simply negligent in not following through.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Dave?
You started out by explaining what the purpose of the, of the proposal is. And I, I understand that at the, at the beginning, you know, we were looking for tools to improve our enforcement, and, and this came up that way. But as a member of the council, looking, trying to decide whether I should vote for this or not, one of the very attractive things to me is, that I think is a purpose and why I might vote for it, it would be because I feel it does ensure that tenants are aware of the rights and responsibilities. And I think that is a very important thing that would come about through this ordinance.
I agree, and I, I had intended to mention that. Certainly, one of the reasons why, it probably serves both purposes in the sense that one of the ways in which it is a tool of enforcement is that it serves to educate people that we think would, by and large, follow the ordinance voluntarily as long as they knew about it. But yes, education was definitely an important purpose, and it has been discussed throughout our discussions on this ordinance.
Would it be appropriate to actually show if we have available the Tenant Rights and Responsibilities document?
Yeah, Bryce, can you bring that up? The tenants' rights and responsibilities? Mr. Harding whispered in my ear that just for the public's benefit, the document that's being brought up right now is one that's created, it was drafted initially by the legal department, but ultimately will be owned by, they come under the ownership of the Community Development Department, and it's something that is not actually part, the text of the document is not part of the ordinance and can be updated from time to time by the Community Development Department. And so as I said, if you look through this, unless you want me to, I wouldn't go through each bullet, but this is just a list of rights that tenants are granted by state law, and so we've, we've just listed those so that tenants have to be, landlords have to make tenants aware of these by providing this document.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of staff?
And maybe after you give them a minute, Bryce, you can scroll up to the bottom half.
Does this mention that the property owner also has a responsibility to provide parking?
I don't remember whether we added that or not. Well, but again, let me clarify that, okay? Because the code section does not require the, the property owner to provide parking. It requires the property owner to not allow more cars on the property than there is parking. So in theory, what our code requires is not that, that a landlord who rents to three people must provide three parking spaces. It requires that if he only has two parking spaces, he must demand that the third person not have a car.
And I think that's done to the, when they obtain the rental dwelling license, so this does not necessarily have to comply with that.
That's correct.
Well, if, are we ready to take public comment, or?
I believe so.
Yeah. Okay, we'd like to open this up to the public. I believe everyone gets two minutes. We have a timer. Feel free to come up and comment. Yes, Dave?
Mr. Chair, if you feel it's appropriate, Peter Christensen from the Realtors' Association is here. He was involved in the committee work and represents a large group of people. I would love to see him, allow him to speak first and give him a little more time since he represents so many people.
Right, and, and this is kind of a citywide item. Do we also want neighborhood chairs to go after him?
If there are any, I think it would be appropriate to let them speak first as well.
Sure, okay. So, Peter?
Thank you. And I'd like to, again, thank the, the council for, I'll probably state who I am, Peter Christensen with the Realtor Association here in Utah County. I'd like to, again, thank the council for the collaborative approach that you've taken with this, with this project, and for inviting us to give our input and suggestion on this issue. We certainly recognize the Herculean task before the city at trying to enforce the zoning laws currently in place in Provo, and at the same time, trying to, to not overly burden landlords and tenants and property owners and property managers while balancing the respect for private property rights, privacy, and neighborhood integrity. We know it's a monstrous task to try and get the right, the sweet spot with this issue, and we, again, appreciate the, the effort you've taken to include the industry players in the discussion, and I think we've, I think we've taken a really good first step in, in better targeting the enforcement efforts of Provo City and trying to better the neighborhoods. So thank you again. One, one thought we had is this final proposal came across my desk, and I guess I have a, a point of clarification and a request from the council. I'll go with the request first. I noticed there's, is, is there still a January 1st implementation date?
That's still currently what's in the ordinance, yes.
Okay. So we would, we would request that, and it can be approached in several different ways, whether it's changing that date, amending it to change that start date, or pushing off the enforcement of it if it goes into effect January 1st, to give us a little time to approach our, our membership and help educate them as this rolls out, so that we can make an effort. There's even talks of a joint effort of having Provo City come in and do a joint meeting with us, and I think the Apartment Association folks would also be able to take advantage of that, to get some of their professionals up to speed before this, this hits. So whether it's July 1st, March 1st, whatever the, we deem appropriate, we would love some time to help educate our membership to get this thing going. Also, a point of clarification, it's been our understanding as we went forward with this, that this would apply to leases that were either created or renewed after the effective date. And as I read the language, that's how I would interpret it, but I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, that this is kind of a going-forward implementation. Is that, is that the understanding?
I don't think that's the intent or, or the content of the current draft. That's been discussed, different ways of implementing have been discussed over times, over time. At this particular point in time, what the current draft represents is, is an effective date at January 1st, at which time compliance would be required of everyone, but our standard enforcement practice of contacting individuals based upon complaints and seeking compliance before prosecution would still be in effect.
Okay. And I would, I would request that you think about maybe approaching it that way. As I've thought about the implementation of this and the burden put on, on the industry and trying to go in and invade current leases, it's, that's where I get the most pushback from our membership. I think they're fine going forward, but when they think of trying to manage all of those agreements, and in some cases, how it's approached, I'm not totally sure, but if they're trying to amend their leases, then we're also putting them at the, at the mercy of tenants to accept the amendment to their current leases.
Let me, let me clarify one thing about that, though, that, again, the intent of the ordinance is, Bryce, if you can go back to the ordinance and go to subsection four. Yeah, you've, you've got it, it's right behind the rights, right there. Yeah, and then just go to subsection four. So the intent of the ordinance is just to require that those three things be included in or actually consist of the contract between the, the owner, the landlord, and the tenant. And so it's not my position that a landlord who already currently, obviously landlords who have no contract, no written contracts at the moment, would have to enter into either a contract or a, what's defined in this ordinance as a contract consisting just of these three Landlords who already have an existing written contract, in my view, are already in compliance with 4C, and all they need to do is provide 4A and 4B in order to be in compliance. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
So, so we're not, we're not, we're not contemplating that you would have to go out on January 1st and sign new contracts with every, with every currently existing tenant.
Okay.
As long as the disclosures have been provided.
Thank you for that clarification. And I think we might actually be able to kill both birds with one stone if, if the enforcement was pushed back, even if the effective date was still January 1st, if there was an agreement that it wouldn't be enforced for 120 days or whatever is deemed reasonable. That would give us time to educate. It would also give them time going forward to get their paperwork in order. So again, thank you for allowing us time to, to come discuss this, and we look forward to ongoing efforts.
Yes.
It might be helpful to have the department explain what we're going to do to inform. Like we were told in council work session today, could, could we do that?
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Council. My name is Carrie Walls, and I'm the zoning administrator. What we are doing to be able to reach out to people so that they're aware of this information is, first, we have drafted a letter, which of course will be changed depending on what the ultimate wording of the, of the ordinance is, informing ten, the property owners as well as their property managers of when the ordinance goes into effect, exactly what it will do and what it won't do. We're going to include a copy of the tenants' rights and responsibilities sheet so that they can read that over as well. They, our IS department has pulled all the addresses on all active RDLs, active rental dwelling licenses, people who hold them, and pending, as well as their property managers' information so that we can mail these out within this week, so they have those. We've also set up opportunities for people to come to open houses to ask questions if they so desire, and those will be on November 29th and December 4th from 5:30 to 7:30 in our office. We are going to have wording on the mayor's blog as well as in our frequently asked questions and probably a separate page on the community development webpage that lets people know what's happening and why. I think that these, the things that we've planned will reach out to a great many people. There may be some that are not aware, but certainly we are happy to educate them. Do you have any questions? Dave?
So, on the tenant rights and responsibilities, I didn't happen to notice on the sheet if it actually gives some contact information in case they feel like they have an issue with the landlord or the property.
We could do that. I think that we could put that on there, to have community developments number and so that they can speak to a zoning officer if they think they have an issue. But the only things we can handle obviously are the ones that are covered by code. If they're private matters between the landlord and the tenant, we can't help them with those things.
Right, so it enumerates a number of rights and some of those I just thought might be things that they would be able to, they would want to have a contact so that they can get clarification, even I suppose if we couldn't help them, we could refer them or explain the situation.
Yes. We were happy to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions? No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else that we would like staff to talk about before we open it up to the neighborhood chairs first and then the public? Okay, so any neighborhood chairs that would like to come and address this issue? Hate to put you in the spotlight.
Vicky Connect, Provost South Neighborhood. We are in support of this and really hope that it gets passed with a 7-0 passage and yes.
So, when you say "we," you are in favor of this?
I am in favor of this and my vice chair sitting over there is in favor of this and other people, certain people in the neighborhood that I've discussed it with, yes.
And there are probably plenty in the audience right now from the neighborhood that are not in favor.
That are not in favor. This is, and they will have their voice heard, I'm sure. So, yes, but I do believe this, this is a tool that could help us to resolve some of the problems we've been having with overboarding and with too many people in one place. And I really think it's a necessary thing.
Thank you.
Richard Holmes, Provost Neighborhood. I am in favor of this also. It seems like a common sense way to enforce the laws that already exist. As I, as I listen to those that are both in favor and opposed to it, I feel like if you're opposed to, to the law, to the zoning ordinance, then you should work to change the ordinance in a way that you would, that would be more pleasing to you. I don't think it's good public policy to say, "I don't like the law, so it shouldn't be enforced." And this to me is a good, is a good tool, I think, that our zoning people can use to enforce the law. There are some in the neighborhood that don't agree. As far as I'm speaking for myself and for our neighborhood committee, my two vice chairs, we both feel that this is a, is a good ordinance and that it should be passed.
Thank you, Richard. Before we hear from the public, and I'm sure we, we have several that would like to speak, I just wanted to add some historical perspective that this particular ordinance, if I remember correctly, Gary came before the council in 2002 or '03. Well, it was supposed, this was supposed to be part of the original rental dwelling license. And so, this has a long history and it's a citywide change. We have citywide issues all around in various neighborhoods and, but I appreciate the fact that it is impacting one neighborhood in particular, so we would like to hear from you. Feel free to come forward. Oh, yes, and make sure you give us your name and, and where you live, or just the city, basically. Yes, yes, yes.
My name is Sean Pace. I live in the Provo Sunset Neighborhood. I'm a landlord. I have several properties here, here in Utah. I just want to first put a label to what you are, you're calling a "tool." The tool is the misdemeanor charge of a landlord when the tenant is violating ordinances that are already in place. I do not wish to be a tool. I ask that you not postpone this, that you just kill it. If this is not right, that I as a landlord can be held liable for something one of my tenants is doing. Education, you can educate in lots of different ways. When they go in to change the utilities into their name, you can give them a list of what their responsibilities are. You can give them whatever you want to give them, when the utilities are put in their name. I also feel this is discriminatory. I, as a homeowner, can have as many cars at my house as I want. I can have adult children that have cars. There's no limit to that. If I have 20 cars, I don't, but if I did, there's no enforcement of that. And yet, if I rent to somebody in that same situation and they have more than the two cars that my letter says they can have, you're going to hold me responsible for them having only two cars, even though their neighbor can have five, six, whatever, in the same property. That is discriminatory. And if I am asked to evict somebody based on that, I will evict them. And at the same time, I will encourage them to sue the city because it's their ordinance, not mine. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Hemingway. I live at 291 North 10th West in Provo. And I, I just stumbled onto this. I haven't really looked into this. The question that I have is, have you looked at neighborhood parking passes where each individual house has their own amount of passes that they get? Have you looked at anything like that, like in neighborhoods that, you know, you get them so many per household? Have you looked at anything like that? Has anything like that been looked at? That has been, has been denied?
It's up to the individual neighborhoods to come in and apply for that.
Well, why don't we just make it overall, the entire city? That way, then everybody can have this all taken care of. We wouldn't have the amount of cars on the street that we have today, I believe. If each individual house and each individual owner had this amount of parking passes that they deem necessary, I come in, I apply for those passes, I get them, I take them home. When people come to my house, I give them pass. Hey, put this on your, your dashboard. It works really well in neighborhoods that have car problems. I've seen it happen. Probably the, the most effective one was in the university area up in Salt Lake. They implemented that a long time ago and it seems to have really decreased parking, which is one of the things that we're trying to do. But I think having a written contract with every single adult and every tenant, you're going to have a hard time dealing with that. Thank you very much.
Hi, Tatiana Quinn, Provo. How to sum up my thoughts? So, this, this ordinance is an enforcement tool. And for that, it's, it's, it's a message to all of the city that the zoning ordinances in place are sought to be enforced in all of those areas. In response to a comment made earlier, there are areas of Provo where people were under the impression, for good reason, that the city was not enforcing there. And that is, that is something to consider when we think about how this is, why it's a big deal to the people who before were not discussing the actual underlying zoning ordinances because they were under the impression that it was not getting enforced. And many of them did not know about the law either. As far as bringing forth proposals, as someone else commented before, to try to change those underlying zoning ordinances, there are people, I'm one of them, that are working on that right now and presenting, preparing a proposal. And we want to prepare it with a lot of data. And it's taking longer than expected, but we're working as quickly as we can. January 1st does not give that, me and the other people in that boat, the opportunity to address this issue, the underlying issue of the actual occupancy rule in the area. I feel like that needs to be addressed first and foremost before we talk about stronger enforcement tools. And as far as stronger enforcement tools, I am willing and ready to help think of alternative solutions. And I've started to think of alternative solutions and I will, am also working on preparing more formal, a more formal presentation of that. There are issues with this ordinance. It's, it's a tool, like I said, but there are so many other, there are so many other consequences that come from it. And as I've said from the beginning, I feel it is very intrusive. As recently brought to my attention, there is a First Amendment issue at risk and other risks, but I've been cut off. Thanks for your time, Tatiana.
Good evening. I'm Brett Reynolds. I am a landlord and I have four rentals, single-family dwellings in this, in this city. When I first heard about this, it made my blood boil that this council would be so naive to think that they could regulate landlords into regulating tenants. That is not a possibility. Tenants are going to do what they're going to do. I have specific contracts with my tenants. They have limits as to how many adults can live there. They have limits as to how many cars they can have, and I enforce it myself. Now, if you're trying to enforce car and occupancy limits, then let's go back to the original place where you've put the laws in place and let's enforce them. Let's not force landlords to take care of your responsibility, that you want to keep your occupancy and your use, usage rates in the, in the streets and parking issues down. I just feel that you're pushing landlords into evicting tenants of certain ethnicities that are going to be in violation of this ordinance all the time. I've had that happen in mine. I've taken care of it myself. I don't need the city to force me by putting regulations on me to do something that I already take care of. There's ways that you can do this. You can have agreements set up to where when people come in to put in, to get power and water service to their homes, they can sign the agreement there. Yeah, they can.
The one that comes in and puts it in their name can, but that doesn't account for everybody else in the house.
He's going to have to account for the other adults because when he brings my contract in, he's going to show how many adults he's contracted in my contract. Thank you.
Ms. Chair, if I could, can I, can I interject just for a minute and address a couple of comments that have been made?
Yes, please.
Just to clarify a misunderstanding before, maybe there are some more comments were made about it. I'm sorry, I missed the name of the gentleman that just spoke.
Brett.
Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Pace, I'd like to address one of the comments that both of you made that I understand, I want you to be clear that in my role as the council to the council and sitting on the committee where this ordinance has been debated many times, I understand that many, many landlords in the city operate in the way that you do and are already executing contracts and enforcing good business practices with respect to your, to your, to your tenants. And there is no intent on the part of this ordinance to try to make you accountable for the violations of your tenants. That's specifically why the provision in the ordinance says that your violation has to be knowing intentional or reckless in order for you to be held liable for it. If...
What was that up there with the misdemeanors? That's...
Well, but look at number seven. Can you scroll down, Bryce, to number seven?
Unfortunately, you can't come back up.
Okay, so, so yes, I mean, to your point, it is a misdemeanor if you violate the ordinance, but unless you, unless you purposely do so, it's not a violation. Okay, so if, if, if the reason there isn't a contract is because you have someone subletting to somebody else inside your house and you don't know they're, they're there, that is not a, not a violation on your part. It is a violation on the tenant's part. And that's why this obligation actually goes both ways. It's an obligation for both the landlords and the tenants and the intent, so let me give you a scenario to help explain why this is a tool. And, and don't mistake this for saying that this is going to solve every problem because it's not. But there's a very common situation that happens when our code enforcement officers come out that we don't currently have a tool to fix. And that situation is that we get a complaint about over occupancy, we go out to the house and the tenants are completely uncooperative and refuse to provide any information to the code enforcement officer about who lives there, or how many people are living there, or who the landlord is, or who they has a contract, or who they're paying their money to. And so, we turn around and we go back to the landlord and I recognize that you and probably most of the landlords in the city would not do this, but some landlords, their response to that is to say, "I have a contract with Joe Smith. He's the only person I know that lives there." Okay? And they do that when we know that that's not true. Okay? But they're doing that as a way to circumvent our over occupancy limits by intentionally signing a contract only with one person and then letting that person rent, sublet out to as many people as they want to in order to overoccupy the house and make, and make the rent cheaper, right? So, that, that situation, it's not the only situation, but that situation was the situation that led to creating this, this tool to, to solve that situation where in that situation, when we get a complaint, when we go out and investigate, which is the only time that this ordinance is ever going to be asked, that anybody's ever going to be asked about this, this ordinance, is when we go out on an over occupancy complaint and we get that response, then there is, there is a responsibility by both the landlord and the tenant to have a document that says they both know that the tenant lives there. And if the landlord is not, not responsible for the fact that that document doesn't exist, the landlord is not in violation of this ordinance. And that may not make you feel any better about it, and it may, might not make anybody else feel any better, but I wanted to clarify that because I think that some of the comments were based on a misperception of what the intent and the effect of the ordinance was. But there, there may certainly be other things about it that you still don't like. I understand that.
Brian, there was also, I comment about requiring or providing parking and that's really not part of this ordinance. That is existing.
Right, that, that, the parking comment came up because this ordinance requires provision of a letter that says what the parking requirements are for a property. But this ordinance in itself does nothing, does not affect the parking requirements in any way, doesn't require landlords to provide any more parking or to have them, as I mentioned, restrict the amount of vehicles on the property to a certain amount. That's an ord, those, to the extent that those responsibilities exist, those have existed for many years by virtue of other ordinances.
Dave?
And since we're taking the time to respond to some of the comments, let me just throw out that it's my understanding, it's in different sections of Provo Code, but it's my understanding that both owner occupied residences as well as rental units are both required to have no more cars owned or operated from the premise that they have, than that they have off-street parking for. And it's my understanding that that's applied to both owner occupied as well as rentals.
Is, is that correct, Brian?
I'm going to look at Gary and Carrie about that one because I'd have to look it up to know off the top of my head.
Licensing requires that the number of vehicles from a property only equal the amount of parking spaces that are there. amount of parking spaces that are there. Homes in general, now that's a licensing requirement to be able to rent out a residential property in, in Provo. Just a, there are minimum parking standards that each new development has that are required, but there's not a limit on just an owner occupied, single-family home, how many vehicles can be owned and operated from there. And if the intent ever is to really go and limit those things, that a better tool is some sort of parking program, a residential permit program or something like that is a way to address that. And that can take many, many forms. Did that answer your question?
It wasn't my question, but you, you addressed it and I'll have to look and see if I can find that. But, but yes, thank you for that.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we would like to hear more from the public.
Hello, my name is Haley Hannigan. I guess in this case I would identify as a tenant. So I've just been listening to all these comments and just want to say I've been grateful for the good landlords that I have had here in Provo. But for every good, there's also not so good. And I just had a question, just hearing reference to actually the drafting of the bill or of the proposition, the drafting of this rights of tenants, these sorts of agreements. I heard that there's input from the Realtors Association, from the City Council, and I'm just wondering what sort of inputs are there from actual tenants? Are there groups or is there any representation before these sorts of things are put in place? Having input from the other half that are being affected by this?
We have had some really dedicated spokespeople for the neighborhood. I'm sure we will hear from Adam, although I don't recognize him anymore. He got a haircut. And, and Tatiana's been very active and you heard she's working on an ordinance. We had, yes, several open houses that Dave Sewell and Dave Harding sponsored at the Rec Center that included, you know, citywide. So we've done a fair amount of outreach, so if you're kind of late to the party, that's okay. It's, it's hard to get everyone informed, but we have been working on this and listening for longer than anything I can remember. The last time we heard this, we postponed it for six weeks so that we could get more public participation.
Thank you.
Scott Taisom, Provo South. As a point of correction, the young tenant involvement occurred pretty much after the drafting had already occurred. So at least we got involved at one, some point, but we were one of the last voices to be heard. Anyways, so I've thought a lot about this, why am I in favor for it or not in favor for it? And on the surface, I should like this a lot because it closes a loophole and it, I hate loopholes. It's government blow, loopholes, not a fan. And so on the surface, just the language of this ordinance, it's completely common sense, let's do it. Nevertheless, I have a very negative reaction to this and I've spent a lot of time figuring out why is that? And I believe the answer to that is because while the ordinance per its language is neutral towards parties, I don't believe the enforcement of this ordinance will be neutral. I believe the enforcement will be discriminatory. A lot of the motivation behind this ordinance has been to get young people out of the neighborhoods via bringing down the occupancy level. In some cases, there's also been a lot of, as I recall, from one of our zoning enforcement officers, lots of people have been trying to get Mexicans, Hispanics, out by saying, "Oh, there must be a ton of them living there, get them out." And so while the actual language of the ordinance is very neutral, I have no hope that the enforcement of it will be, and that's one of my primary concerns. I believe it's six weeks ago, Joe Dromney talked about Lady Liberty and how she has the sword and the blindfold and all that stuff. But the problem is that we're giving her a bigger sword, a bigger club, but she's not blindfolded because that's not how this is being approached. It's being, I'm almost out of time, so I will end my comments. Thank you very much, council.
Did we get your name?
Scott Taisom.
Thank you.
May I request additional time given my extensive involvement in this, even though I'm not a county, a neighborhood chair? It seems we don't have a neighborhood chair that represents my demographic.
State your name first.
My name is Adam Arnett from the Provo South neighborhood.
And how much time would you like?
Four minutes.
I think that's great.
Excellent, thank you. So one of the things that I like about Dave Harding's statement is that he believes the education for this is a really important thing.
So if we're going to do that, there are a couple of things that we talked about in our policy discussion lunch on Monday that I didn't see reflected in either this draft or in the conversation during the work meeting today. Couple of things I'd like to touch on. First of all, I think it's pretty obvious I'm adamantly opposed...
Something happened. Can you hear me?
It was just gibberish, don't worry about it. But I'm adamantly opposed to this ordinance. I don't think that's any surprise to anyone. I think it's incredibly discriminatory and I think it's inappropriate for the city to be doing it. That being said, I have an inkling that this is going to be passed tonight. So if we're going to pass an ordinance, let's make sure it's appropriate and done the right way. A couple of things that stand out to me where this is not being done the right way because I want the city to be protected, I don't want it to leave itself vulnerable, or just to do things in a bad way. First and foremost, the effective date being January 1st, 2018 is insufficient time to come into compliance. It may be sufficient time to give initial outreach and education, but it's not sufficient time to come to compliance like our friend here from the Realtors Association indicated. It's going to take time because while it does not require a new lease agreement or rental, rental contract, it does require documentation to take place between two parties, including an understanding of what that documentation is. The term property manager should not have a restriction-based definition. It should be open to anyone that is a property manager regardless of their situation or their dwelling type, otherwise it is discriminatory. There should be a grace period, like was also advocated by our friend over here. My suggestion in the policy discussion lunch is that we should, if we're going to pass this, look for a grace period of up to one year or until the signing of a new lease agreement, which sounded very familiar. Because then we're looking at only lease agreements that are signed under the new provision after the effective date, so there is no plausible deniability for information about, "Am I legally occupying a unit?" I think it short-sighted to not offer a grace period. One of the comments in the work meeting, or pardon, in the discussion lunch was that we're just going to reward the landlords if we do that. Well, let's not focus on them, let's focus on the constituents who are going to be affected. Let's say we have four schoolteachers occupying a five-bedroom house. Necessarily, they could have signed a contract unknowingly that they were going to be non-compliant, and now they're suddenly responsible for it. We need to allow people to be able to put themselves in a financial position to be compliant, not just aware compliant. The rental contract or lease should not be able to satisfy the demands of this ordinance. So there's a comment earlier today from Brian Jones, that just showing my rental license or pardon, my lease agreement or my rental contract, that should satisfy the demands of this, that is actually insufficient. This ordinance is primarily focused on having the rental license and having the renters or the tenants' rights and responsibilities. If you're going to accept the lease agreement, that actually puts you in potential liability with a state statute. Section 4 subsection C is redundant. Necessarily, you understand occupation if you've accomplished A and B. Per Dave Harding, the use of disclosure agreement is the best option, not using the term contract. It is necessarily confusing. We've seen that tonight. We saw that in the work session meeting today, and we've seen it in every open house we've had on this issue. We need to just absolve ourselves of that word because we're talking about a disclosure. Zoning officers should be trained and to, and instructed to not request a contract as it is likely to confuse the tenants. They should request the disclosure. Again, we don't want to put the city in any liabilities, and we don't want to confuse a tenant into disclosing information they have no reason to have to do. I'm going to go ahead and continue with this. There's ample confusion about the language as evidenced in the work session today. For the outreach and education, there should be exhibits attached to this ordinance...
How much more do you have?
Pardon?
How much more?
Maybe a minute. I have like two points left. There should be exhibits outlining all of the outreach and education that's required for landlords, tenants, neighborhood chairs, and enforcement officers. There's been no comment about having a formal education plan from our neighborhood chairs down to our, our everyday resident. If we really do believe in the neighborhood plan, that should be part of it to make sure that there's no confusion and there's multiple layers of contact. The time for compliance again is insufficient. We should be looking at, at least six months for landlords to be able to review this with their potential attorneys. And more than anything, I'm not saying that we should not be compliant. If the law is in place, you should be compliant with it. You got to follow the laws as they are. But this is just a horrible ordinance. And I'm not saying that we don't need a better tool. This just isn't it. It needs more workshop.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Hannah Peterson. I'm the vice chair for the Provost Neighborhood. I live there. I'm also a landlord. I rent to families and also young single adults in this area as well. I think it's a great ordinance. It's a good start, and I would hope that you would please pass it and be unanimous. I'm talking, I'm here representing the hundreds and hundreds of constituents who have been waiting years, years and years and years for this. I know there's emotional, emotional ties to this and I recognize it, but, but please, please pass it so that we can move forward. Sometimes in this mix, people have often said, "This is a law that's pitting families against singles or one group against another." Let me just say from my personal perspective, you know, I was the one on that Southeast Area Plan that said, "We need to rezone an area for the singles." I personally would be very open to working with, with singles or anybody else to, to provide housing that fits everybody's need. But I know that I am not going to get the backing from our neighborhood without stronger zoning legislation. We have been exploited for such a long time with no sufficient zoning tools that there is such, there's just an attitude of no growth, no change, no compromise, no nothing. And I can only say that for all parties involved, passing this law helps all parties involve. It gives us a tool to be able to say, "Hey, let's consider something different. We're not, maybe we can be protected this time if we go ahead and move forward." So that's my thought. It might not be needed in all of your neighborhoods, but please vote it, please vote for it, please be unanimous, please move forward so that we can all move forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the council for discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dave.
I'm just wondering if Wes Marriott has anything to say. I'm just wondering if you had anything to say. You've been...
I'll say something. I was just, I just said to Adam, I said, "He spoke for my two minutes."
Wesley Marriott, how's it going, everyone? I think my, my two cents is just the same as what I said before. I don't think this ordinance is going to change anything. So, I mean, I know that, I mean, I've talked to most of you, I haven't talked to Kay or George, but most of the rest of you, I talked to you and you said you were going to pass it tonight. So I don't know if that's changed in some of the conversation, but I personally believe it's not going to change anything. It's going to tighten down on whoever is renting, but it's not going to change the supply problem. It's not going to change the community involvement in the singles area. There's, there's a lot of problems in that. I also feel like, I mean, Hannah Peterson's done a really good job trying to see who has been overoccupied or not, but before she got involved, there was only like three to seven cases reported a year. And that doesn't mean there wasn't a problem, but it just means that maybe people are less concerned about it to the degree of three in a house versus whatever the eight is, right? I know you've talked about Arlington, but I just feel like in general, you guys are going to pass this, but you don't have the force, the zoning enforcement to actually make it happen. It's still going to, it's, it's going to stay the same, but you're, it's another tool so you can pass it, use this thing for something down the road, but in the end, it's not going to change anything. And I think I'll just put more work on you guys to actually try and tighten down on these ropes. So the problem will still exist, and you guys will have to come up with something that helps that supply problem in the end. So thanks. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Wes. Do we have any discussion with the council? Or any questions? Yes, Gary.
I, I agree with you, Wes. The problem is not this ordinance. The problem is the supply that we've got in our city and, and what we can do to, to make adjustments to that. And I think that's something that we need to, I'm not sure how the city does that with the help of developers. We need, we, we as cities don't go out and build things necessarily. We got to work with the developers that'll come in and say, "Yeah, we can do this." I've talked with one just last week. He says, "I'd like to do something like this." And so I think it just depends on where we, you've just got to find the right developer and the right property, but it is a supply problem, and it's not necessarily an ordinance problem is what I can see.
Didn't quite call me out like Mr. Marriott, but it's getting the eye. So I would love to do as our neighborhood chair from Provost, is it Provost South? Ms. Connect?
Yeah.
Suggested and have this pass with a, with a 7-0 vote. I do support the, the basic proposal. I think it is a good tool. And I, again, I really like the idea that we are requiring disclosure to our tenants to make sure that they are aware of their rights and responsibilities. I think that's great. I've, I've tossed and turned on this because I really do want to go on the record as, as supporting it, but as we've seen multiple times today and most recently from Mr. Christensen, who was a part of, of the development of this, the confusion over the word, using, using the word contract to mean something that is just a disclosure. And then I do think we need to consider carefully a reasonable implementation timeframe. I, I personally really like the idea of, you know, requiring this for all new and renewed leases over the next year. Could I, could I vote for it without that? I don't know. I think we do need to have a discussion on what's a reasonable implementation, but I, I can't, I can't, I can't bring myself, I don't think I can vote for this if it continues to redefine the word contract and, and use that. So I think that's all I wanted to say, but we, we have debated this long and hard, but that's, that's where I'm at. I would love, I would love to go on record as supporting this, but without, with, with calling it contract, I can't do that.
So that, Carrie, I have a question. Based on your comments, so we've heard several times the suggestion of implementing this rather than a fast date when people renew and over time, and I just wanted your perspective on the... And I just wanted your perspective on what that does to your ability to enforce this and be able to do your job.
I think that this is a great tool. Like Brian said, it's not going to solve all the problems. It's just one tool to get where we want to go, which is to have complete compliance. And I think Brian's also right that the property owners who already obey the law as they're written are not the problem. They're already making sure that they're within compliance with occupancy and parking and every other item. The ones that this will affect the most are the ones that are not complying at this time. Giving them more time, just, I believe, shows that we're not willing to step up and stand behind what we're saying. And as far as people and their impression of we don't enforce the law, we always enforce the law. The problem is, is that we've not always had six zoning officers, which you graciously allowed for us to have, two additional, and that has helped a great deal. You know, when back when the rental dwelling licensing program was first adopted in 2003, we had 12 zoning officers, and I was one of those 12. We had just several who just did what I like to call the outside uglies, like landscaping and junk, but all the rest of them dealt with the rental dwelling licensing program. And mainly that was because we had a lot of properties that were older and had to have legal determinations done on them to be able to determine what they were and what their occupancy should be and their parking. Now, here we are, you know, 14 years down the road, and many, most of the properties in town have had legal determinations established. We have newer projects that have been built specifically for families but are turning into, property owners are renting them out to nine, 10, 11, 12 singles. And that may or may not be a problem as far as room in the property, but it becomes a problem because maybe they only have two parking spaces or four parking spaces. And just the sheer number of people coming in and out, and if you're multiplying that, let's say they were students. No, let's not say they're students. Let's just say that they're just a bunch of singles that want to live together. They're not staying for long periods of time, and so you're seeing an increase of moving in and moving out, although in this day and age, our society is a lot more transient across the board. I see that in my own neighborhood all the time, people moving in and out, whether they're families or singles or whatever the case may be. I don't think that this ordinance is discriminatory. I think it addresses people as a whole, whether you're a tenant or a landlord, and it doesn't matter. I would like to address the misconception that perhaps we enforce on people of other ethnic origins more, and that is absolutely false. We treat everyone the same. So if you were to have a family, let's say I own a property and I have a family from another country living in that property, and it's the mom and the dad and their two adult children and their adult children's spouses, and their, one of the spouses, the adult, the main party's parents, that's still considered a family, and that is allowed within our ordinance, provided they meet certain other issues such as parking. Now, if they all have cars, having eight cars in a property that only has two parking spaces, yeah, that's a problem. And if they're renters, it's, you know, it becomes more of a problem. I would like to see this pass unanimously because I think that it sends a message to the landlords and the tenants that our city is going to stand up and we are going to take care of the issues that we have here as a whole. Do you have any other questions, Dave? Sorry. I got on a soapbox.
It was basically if you had an opinion on January 1st versus any other option.
I like January 1st. I think January 1st for what we're requiring is acceptable. As Brian has also said, that the only time we're going to be asking for this is if there is an issue. If there's been a complaint and we have reason to believe that they are overoccupied, then it's going to become an issue. Now, if you're like the gentleman that spoke, Mr. Reynolds or Mr. Pace, and you take care of your properties, you already have contracts with your tenants and such, we're probably never going to ask for them for anything. In fact, off the top of my head, I don't remember ever enforcing on a property with those last names. And I've been here a long time. But I think that January 1st is fine. If the council as a whole decides that you either want to make the compliance date later or you want to make a grace period, I would suggest that it not be six months to a year. I would suggest that it be a much shorter period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For one thing, I'm a little uncomfortable with the idea of relating to what Mr. Christensen said, of requiring that people come into compliance before contract renewal. I would feel much better about this. I think it would be more compassionate if we were to, and I think maybe Mr. Harding alluded to this as well, is to base it on when the contract renews. So it's either the tool goes into effect when the contract renews or one year, whichever is earlier, which would usually be when the contract renews. What I worry about is, and I think this is basically what Mr. Arnett suggested in Policy Lunch, and I'm not suggesting that there would be a grace period on enforcement. We could still enforce the way we do now. All I'm suggesting is that the tool itself would not be available mid-contract until the contract renewed. So, you know, if you have a situation with eight people or something and we're able to enforce on it without using the tool, we could still do that. So that would be one thing that would really help me, and I think that the residents who are affected would appreciate and feel like there was some acknowledgement of the effect that this could have on them. The risk level has changed. We're hoping this ordinance will be successful and effective. And if it is, then the financial risk to people who are currently in overoccupied situations, some of whom are unaware or who had been told that you don't need to worry about this, now their financial risks will suddenly change, and they may lose a deposit, they may lose last month's rent and that type of thing. And if this is as effective as we hope it would be, I just don't feel very good about that happening to significant numbers of people. So I think this is a very significant tool. I've been rooting for it all along, but that aspect does concern me. Is there any interest in considering that among other council members?
I think the process that our zoning department goes through, in essence, gives that sort of leeway anyway, because it's, you put this in January 1, as Ms. Walls very well explained, and it's complaint-based. So it's not like every single, you know, everybody's going to be aware, they're going to send the letters out, everyone will be notified immediately of the new law. So, and as far as coming into compliance, it will happen on a complaint basis. So it's already sort of worked into the system of the way they do things anyway. People are going to have more, probably more time unless they're out of compliance and there's a, and there's a complaint against them. And there's a process worked out for that, too, for those that are out of compliance, those who are not obeying the law. There's already a process in place for those, and that takes time as well. So I don't see any benefit from delaying this past January 1 because of that built-in sort of process anyway that we have that's very fair. It's not only fair to those who have broken the law, but it's fair, it's more fair to those who have been the victims of those breaking the law. Those who are obeying the law, who have been obeying the law for years and years and who have dealt with the social problems and some of the issues, just the quality of life issues that have come from those breaking the law around them. And so when we talk about compassion and we talk about fairness, who are we, who do we want to be compassionate towards? Yeah, we want to be, we want to be fair, we want to be compassionate. But when we delay this, or we send a message that we're not serious about enforcing, then we're not being compassionate to those who have suffered probably the most, those who have been obeying the law. And for me, rewarding those who have been obeying the law and by just enforcing, by giving our zoning department the tools to do their job and do it effectively seems to me to be the most compassionate thing on all sides.
So Mr. Sewell spoke about, you know, some reasons why we might look at either delayed implementation or requiring this for new and renewed leases. For me, it is a, I see it slightly differently, or the reasons that I support that would be slightly different. If we have people who don't care much about whether they're in compliance or not, then January 1st comes, they don't do anything, perhaps they're going to get a complaint, now they've come into compliance. But that's a pretty good gamble. If you don't really care, just wait until you're enforced on and then you do it, and you know, 99 times out of 100, you're not going to be complained on, you won't get enforced on, and so it doesn't happen. The people who care, the people who want to be in compliance, now they're going to be informed sometime in the next few weeks, and they're going to have to go out and do a special errand that they were not planning on doing and in order to become incompliant with the law. If we were to wait until the lease renews, now they have to be out doing this anyways, renewing the lease anyways, and now they can have the extra paperwork so they can come into compliance. So we're not requiring extra work from them. I just feel like this is, it's the people who care about being in compliance that we're adding a workload to them, and it sounds to me like we're just kind of broadcasting that, you know, it doesn't matter if you actually do this or not because just, you know, if you don't do it, then if there's a complaint, then we'll give you a chance to come into compliance. I really want every single lease that happens in Provo to get the tenants the rights and responsibilities. I want, I want people to be compliant with this, not out of worry that they may get enforced upon, but because it's the law. And I'm not saying that very well, but so, you know, for me, the ideal would be to have this required as the lease renews because they're already out, they're already doing the work. I did hear a date from Mr. Christensen that he suggested maybe March 1st. I mean, at the very least, that gives people time after the holidays to shuffle all the paperwork in order to get into compliance. And I really worry about, you know, sending the message that, yeah, we're going to have it implement on January 1st, but don't really, don't worry about it because it doesn't really matter if you follow it or not because we'll give you a chance once we get a complaint. So, yeah.
I have a question for Carrie again. Carrie? She is being questioned. Just a hypothetical. If you went out and got a complaint and you were asking everyone, do you have a contract? And they actually did have a contract, but they didn't happen to have a copy of the tenant rights or a copy of the rental dwelling license which had not been given to them, what would happen? They would have time. I mean, if that's really a big deal, they would still have time to be given that.
I think my first instinct would be then to contact the property owner, the property manager, and just let them know that we had been at the property, knocked on the door, talked to the tenants, saw that they all had contracts, but they didn't have copies of the rental dwelling license approval letter or the tenant's rights. I think that would, and just ask them, you know, do you understand that they need to have this as well as a contract? And, you know, perhaps if we were to send the property manager or the owner a notice of violation, they would have time in which to comply with that information. And then once they comply with it and I can verify it, then it goes no further.
Right.
Okay. I do have one thing I wanted to mention, and we're talking about waiting until the contracts renew. I know that there are property owners or property managers out there who do have multi-year contracts with people. So you're telling me that their grace period could be two years, three years for this situation?
Cap to the year.
Cap to the year?
Yeah.
Okay. But that would not prohibit me from enforcing on occupancy if there were a problem?
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Just a little response to Mr. Harding and the messages being given. I think the message, if this ordinance passes tonight and the law is in effect and compliance is January 1st, and our zoning officers are out there in the community and they enforce it, I think that's a stronger message about enforcement than saying, well, let's give you some time until your lease renews, let's give you another couple of months or six months or a year. I think the discussions happened and we've come to some kind of an agreement on what tool we need to do it, and I think we passed the law that that tool goes into effect. And then the message should be, now we're going to use that tool. And delaying that, starting that, I think is more of a softening of the policy than immediate, not immediate, but a January 1 compliance. So I'm not in agreement with extending that.
If we don't have any alternative motions, we have an implied.
I'll make a comment.
Yes.
I would be in favor of an extension if we were changing the occupancy limits. We're not changing the limits. The limits have been there for decades, well, decades literally. And all we're saying is we're going to give enforcement a tool to enforce what already has been the law for an awful long time. And so I would think that delaying it sends the message that Kay says that we really aren't serious, but we are serious about it this time.
So we have an implied motion before us, and if we're ready to vote, we can do so at this time, yes.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, but just a quick comment. As far as the implementation date, again, for me, this is more about Mr. Pace and Mr. Reynolds, the ones who are already in compliance, who want to continue to be in compliance and not making them go out the week of Christmas and, you know, knock on the door of their tenants to get these documents signed. So that, to me, is why I think a delayed implementation, why we should consider that. I will, I move that we, that we look at replacing the word contracts. I move that we replace the word contract with disclosure and acknowledgement, which is what we actually define. And so I make that motion that we look at the draft that was worked on with the substitute language for that.
You want us to bring up that previous draft?
I think that would be helpful. I think that would be helpful to consider my substitute motion.
Right. Is there a second?
Second.
Bryce, can you open version three? So this is, this is what I understand to be your motion. This is a draft that was worked on previously and has been discussed a couple of times that replaces the word "contract" with the phrase "disclosure and acknowledgement," and also in "one see," adds some additional language to make clear that although if a landlord does not want to do an additional document besides the contract that they already have, that's acceptable, but only if the contract does actually meet the requirements of the ordinance and they're willing to make it available when required under the ordinance. Otherwise, the remaining provisions are the same.
And I make this motion with the intent that we can get to a unanimous vote on this ordinance.
Okay. Yes, Dave?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Sorry, Mr. Sewell, just to clarify one thing. The one thing that this version does not have, because it was considered previously, is it does not have the language that was added today. I'm assuming that the intent of your motion is to include that language as well.
That is my intent, yes.
So if it passes, we can then add that in and make that update?
That was the intent of my second as well.
Okay, yes.
So I have really mixed feelings about this. On the one hand, I've been rooting for this for months. I appreciate the effort of our zoning committee, and I'm very aware of the effects of overoccupancy in many areas of our city, and I do believe that this will be a useful tool that will increase efficiency and effectiveness. So I should be cheering for this, and I should be one of the seven that everyone's asking us to vote unanimously. However, I do have two concerns. One of them is this that has just been raised. I've seen too many cases already of this being misinterpreted to mean that every tenant and subtenant must have a contract, and that is not what the ordinance says. I think it is just inherently bad policy to take a word like "contract" that everybody understands. You know, it's an exchange of consideration in legal terms. Somebody, you know, both sides need to give something, whether it's money or services or something, and we're redefining it to mean something that is different than what it means in everyday usage. I think that's bad policy, and I can't support it. I've seen it misinterpreted too many times. I became even more concerned today when I heard that it's the intent of our enforcement people when they go to the door to ask for the contract. That will be interpreted as the lease agreement contract. Okay? Not, that will not be interpreted as these two pieces of paper that have the rental dwelling license application and tenant's rights and responsibilities. So even though the, even in the previous wording, the ordinance says you only have to show this, if we're going around and the ordinance says "contract required" and our people are asking for the contract, what people are going to assume is that we want to see this. I think it's bad policy, unwise for city government, and overbearing to ask for more information than what we really require. And our own attorney drafted a very clear solution to the problem that calls this what it is, a disclosure and an acknowledgement. That's what it is. It's not a contract. I mean, for legal purposes, we can define it to be a contract in the ordinance, but it's not in any common usage of the word. If we perpetuate that misunderstanding that people have to produce this when all they really have to produce is this, we're going to be generating unnecessary, long-term opposition to the ordinance from perpetuating the misunderstanding. Our ultimate goal is voluntary compliance and cooperation, and so we should be very clear in our wording and not impose or ask for more than we need. That's my opinion. Another comment that I'd like to make. I know this has been very hard for certain people who feel targeted, certain demographics that feel targeted, and I think those who've engaged with us know that that's not our intent, that we want this to apply across the board, that over occupancy is a citywide issue, and we're not targeting any particular group. But nevertheless, a lot of, there are a lot of people that feel like we are. Even though I'm really happy about what this tool could do for us, I feel badly that we have made so little effort to include those who will be affected by this in the conversation. I just really feel badly about that. They were not included before this was drafted, and we talked about, you know, all the six weeks and the town halls and things that Mr. Harding and I have done, but almost nothing of the feedback that we've brought back has been incorporated. And there's just a few little things that we could do that I think would build more support and understanding, and this is one of them, and so I regret that I can't support
So I disagree that, I disagree with the disclosure and acknowledgement being something where people will know when zoning enforcement goes to the door and asks, instead of a contract, they say, "Well, do you have a disclosure and acknowledgement?" I don't think 10 out of 10 tenants are going to say, "Oh, yeah, that means the copy of the rental dwelling license application approval letter for that property, and that means the tenant's rights and responsibilities, and that means that I signed that I was going to lease the premise." I don't think that they're going to say, that that's going to be, "Oh, yeah, that's exactly." But I think what they will do is go to the packet they received from the owner, and they'll bring that forward, and then the zoning officers can say, "All we need is the rental dwelling license application approval letter, a copy of that, and the rights and responsibilities." And they'll ask for what they need. But I don't think that having disclosure and acknowledgement, when the zoning officers go to the door and ask for disclosure and acknowledgement, that that's going to be the perfect wording. I just don't see that happening. And when we talk to Carrie Walls, who does this for a living, and we talk to Marcus Daly, who does this for a living, having contract defined in our code makes it very clear what we're asking for. And I don't know that anyone's going to go to our code to find out what the definition is, but it's going to be the zoning officers. When they show up and they say, "Do you have a contract?", probably 10 out of 10 tenants know what a contract is, and they can ask, and then the zoning officer's going to have to do some explaining anyway. This is what we're looking for. These are the forms that we're looking for. And it should be, you know, this should have been something that your landlord gave you. By law, your landlord should have given you these two forms, and there's going to be some explaining to do at the door anyway, is my thought. And so because our legal has said that contract, the way it's defined in our code, is perfectly legal, perfectly fine, and it works great, and he doesn't suggest changing that, and he's going to be, Mr. Daly's going to be the one that will be defending these in court if he ever has to, I appreciate his knowledge on that. And then I also appreciate the fact that Ms. Walls is, she's been doing this for years, and she knows what she needs, and she knows what her zoning officers need and what they're going to be doing at the door. And so the fact that they're good with this wording and feel like this is going to work well for them is enough for me to have the confidence that it's going to work as the tool that they've asked us to provide.
Thank you. So we have a substitute motion before us, and so let's vote on that. All in favor of the substitute motion? And all opposed? So we have Councilman Harding and Sewell in favor and the rest of the council opposed. Do I need to name all the names individually?
That's been our normal practice.
We have Councilman Van Buren, Stewart, Connect, Santiago, and Gary Winterton opposed. So with that, we are, I believe, now ready to vote on the implied motion that was before us to start with? Yes.
Just for completeness, I'd like to make one other motion, that we either base the effective date on the renewal date or go with March 1. And I'll go with either one, if there's enough council members that would support that. So that's kind of an either-or motion, but-
Do we have a second?
So second, whichever one you prefer.
I'll second the March 1. I think that is more likely.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
Just, I would love to continue the outreach effort, love to have an event with realtors in January or February or as soon as they can put it together, invite the Utah Apartment Association, just really get as many people aware of this as we can. I think those extra two months would be very valuable.
Okay, all in favor of the motion? And all opposed? So we have Councilman Harding, Sewell, and Winterton in favor, and Santiago, Connect, Stewart, and Van Buren opposed. Are we now ready to vote on the implied motion? All in favor of the implied motion? All opposed? Councilman Harding and Sewell opposed. Gary Winterton, Kim Santiago, Dave Connect, George Stewart, and Kay Van Buren in favor. The last two items have been continued, and I believe that brings us to the end of the So we will adjourn by consent.
If there's no objection, that's acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you for conducting, Mr. Connect.
Okay, well, that's that.